The special meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Tuesday, March 17, 2020. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you like to take the role?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos is absent.
Okay. So, this is a little different. Welcome to everybody and to those of you who are watching at home. On the line, as you may have heard, we have Counselor Driggs. Solicitor Marcelo is also on the line, as is Assistant Solicitor DeCosta. Counselor DiMederos, as many of you know, is a nurse at St. Anne's. She was there all day and called back in, so she's unable to join us. So, just to note about our unusual format, per the Governor's recommendation regarding gatherings of people, in addition to the suspension of certain open meetings requirements, the council is meeting here absent the public present. However, we are live streaming this, so folks can watch it live. It'll also be available on YouTube for people who don't want to watch it this evening but would like to watch it later. So, rest assured, any and all business that we will be conducting is, in fact, available for public review at all times. So, the purpose of our meeting here tonight is to talk a little bit about what's going on with the coronavirus, the state of emergency, both the state of emergency that the Governor's declared, as well as the state of emergency that we were asked to declare as well. A little bit of background, over the weekend, the Governor asked each and every of the 39 communities to declare a state of emergency and to enact certain policies consistent with what the state was doing in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus. They are most particularly concerned about overwhelming the medical system in Rhode Island and that the key thing here is to slow down the spread of this virus so we don't inundate our hospitals and our medical providers. As Council President, having been asked to do that, I did, in fact, sign a declaration of emergency. But as you know, in the charter, the request is then that the council ratify those declarations as soon as reasonably possible. So, that's part of the reason for this meeting this evening. It's been kind of a busy weekend. There are at least two conference calls a day for municipalities. The inter-local trust has been fabulous. They've really stepped up. They've organized a daily conference call for each of the municipalities every day. They've got a communications firm that is helping put together materials that we can put on our website, that we can share with our citizens, that cover everything from where to get health information, small business loans, all that sort of stuff. They're also a place where best practices are being shared between the communities and the issues that we're all facing are kind of bubbling up. And they're reaching out to the Governor's office and in many cases can get us answers pretty quickly. So, they've been awesomely helpful. Additionally, the Governor's staff...
Isn't that the League of Cities and Towns?
What did I say it was?
The Interlocal.
Oh, I apologize. It's the Rhode Island League of... It's the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. I feel terrible. That is definitely the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns. Secondarily, each day, there is a conference call for municipal leaders with representatives from the Governor's office. They often have representatives from the Health Department, from the Department on Aging, from, you know, EMA. So, we have a chance to speak directly to representatives from the Governor's office through that conference call as well. So, it's been a little bit busy. So, the first thing I need to ask the council to do is a request to amend the agenda. We had scheduled this meeting prior to the state declaration of emergency in ours, simply to, you know, is a preparatory meeting for us. Subsequently, this state emergency came along, so it's not on the agenda, but we can, under 4246B, we can have a motion to add the following item to the town council agenda, which is the ratification of emergency orders of Town Council President 202001, 202002, and 202003, issued previously by the Town Council President under the authority of the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Tiverton, Section 405, entitled Declaration of Emergency. So...
So moved.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay.
To amend it, right? To amend it?
Yes, to amend the...
Yeah, I'm in favor.
To amend the agenda. Okay. So, that brings us to the declarations of emergency themselves.
Okay, Madam President.
Yes.
The first one that you mentioned, paragraph seven, I think it says to strongly encourage people not to visit Town Hall. And I was sort of under the impression that it was not strongly encouraged that they should not visit Town Hall unless by appointment. Am I wrong?
I'm looking at...
It's paragraph seven on the first... The first one, before the amended one.
001?
It's the one you did on March 16.
They were all done on March 16.
No, there's one...
What's at the top? 202001, 02, or 03?
Okay. So, number seven says town officials are directed to cancel all non-essential official town meetings. I think you're... Look, number nine, maybe?
Sorry, number nine. I'm sorry. Yeah, number nine.
Town residents are strongly encouraged to curtail visiting Town Hall or other municipal offices to conduct non-essential business and to utilize the town's website to conduct normal business.
Yeah. Should that be stronger, like town residents shall not visit Town Hall or conduct non-essential business, but shall utilize the town's website? I don't know.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes, John.
I mean, for the purposes of moving this along, I... The way I look at this and the way that I read it is that, you know, somebody can still come to Town Hall and say, use the lockbox to drop something off. We'd encourage you not to drop... You know, we prefer you to drop it in the mail, but we don't want to make... We want to make sure that those... The ability of dropping things off and say the lockbox to pay taxes is still available.
Right. Counselor Driggs, I don't know if you've been to Town Hall, but essentially, there is a sign out front. There's a big sign that says it's closed to the public except by appointment. So, you know, people are calling and if they have business that has to be conducted here, like they need a marriage license or something like that, or they have to record a deed, then they're being given an appointment. But essentially, the door is locked. So, unless you have an appointment, you really aren't able to do that.
Okay.
And by the way, that's the same with... Well, the police station has a different setup, but the fire department as well, because in the past, you know, folks liked to wander down sometimes to the fire department to visit and DPW. And that's no longer the case there either. It's all by appointment only.
All right. Well, that was my only comment, and I had not seen the... Okay.
So, just so you know, you know, the provisions in this... In these declarations are entirely consistent with the declaration that the state has made. These are the provisions that we've been encouraged to incorporate. So, they're consistent with what the state is asking us to do.
Okay.
And...
Madam President?
Yes, John.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the declaration of municipal emergency items 202001, 202002, and 202003.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any other discussions?
No second yet.
Second.
Oh, second. I'm sorry. Joe seconded it.
Now...
Is there any other discussion or question about any of these orders?
Madam President, before you take a vote to ratify them, you need to take the vote to allow you to vote to ratify them, because you have to be fair with the emergency. It's the second part of your motion.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I see. Sorry about that.
So, I withdraw my motion then.
Okay. So, pursuant... Am I looking at the paragraph that says pursuant to 4246B, the chair will accept a further motion to vote on the above referenced?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Normally, you can add an agenda pursuant to an item, but you can't vote on it unless there's exigent circumstances.
Ah.
Madam President?
Thank you. So, I'll just read this. Pursuant to 4246B, the chair will further accept a motion to vote on the above referenced added agenda items because there exists an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm just trying to find where that is.
It's not on the agenda.
Is it on your piece, maybe?
Solicitor Marcelo, since this is all a little unusual, because we don't usually add things to the agenda and vote except for emergency purposes, made me a cheat sheet, so I couldn't follow it up too much.
Oh, all right. I was like, where?
No. It's on my cheat sheet here.
Okay, all right.
So, there is a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay.
Nancy, I'm in favor.
And Nancy Driggs votes yes. Okay, so now...
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify executive order 202001, 202002, and 202003.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any questions, any other questions about these declarations? Okay, in that case, all in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so it's unanimous. So, finally, the last part of my cheat sheet here says, "The chair will now accept a motion to ratify the previously issued executive orders by the Town Council President pursuant to Section 405 of the Tiverton Town Charter, and said orders to remain in full force in effect until amended or repealed by the Town Council President with notice to the Town Council and Town Clerk within 24 hours of any amendment or repeal."
I thought we just... I thought I just did that, but that's okay. So moved.
Second.
Wait, so what are we doing now? I'm sorry.
I forget all those... All the extra bits at the end there.
No, it's actually... This is a final thing. Mike, are you there or Travis?
That's right. You kind of skipped a spot, but that's fine. It's just more inclusive than what Counselor Edwards' motion was, that's all.
Okay, so...
This is the ratification. This allows... This is the final ratification of those orders. It allows the Town Council President to modify those orders on a going-forward basis as long as they give the Town Clerk the rest of the council 24-hour rule.
You turn the volume up.
To ratify these again and again and again.
So, do we have to vote on that, or is that incorporated in Edwards' motion?
No, that's a new motion. It's a more...
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
There we go. So, there's a motion and a second?
Let's see, I'll pick it up.
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay. I think essentially, if I understand this, what this does is because this is an ever-changing situation, tomorrow, the Governor may come out with another... The state may come out with another set of recommendations or guidelines or enact their own, and we need to follow along with that. So, we may need to amend these periodically. It's already happened once. The first day we issued it, we had to amend it, you know, after the Governor's press conference. So, I think that that's what the point of doing all this is. Mike and Travis, have we completed this correctly?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I just want to clarify one thing. It's the declaration of the state of emergency as just ratified by the Town Council that gives the chief executive officer of the town, which in this case, right now, is the council president, the ability to issue further restrictions and orders and whatnot. So, it's because of that authority that she now can go forward and put other restrictions on as necessary. The council obviously has the right to review that at any time, amend it, suspend it, or reneg the declaration of emergency. As you don't know, because you weren't on these meetings, but as the council president said, every afternoon, we have a meeting with the Governor's office, and they put out new guidelines that they want us to adopt. And the reason why they want local towns to adopt it is some of the things that cities and towns do only are done or licensed by city and towns and not by the state.
Right.
So, it gives the town the ability to enforce its own orders, and we wouldn't be able to do that without the declaration.
Mike, what happens if a town doesn't agree with what the Governor's saying?
They don't enact it. And that's it.
Okay.
It's like they can't act, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry about that. Thanks.
All right. So, next on our agenda was a request, and we... I don't know that we need a vote. We can do this sort of by consensus, but given that, you know, any one of us may find ourselves in a quarantine situation or have a family member that becomes ill, is to ask the acting town administrator, which is Nancy, to have the department heads develop essentially a line of succession list. So, in other words, with everything that's going on, it's a little bit chaotic. If one of the department heads had to be out, we'd like to know who the department head recommends that, you know, step in as acting, if that person isn't. So, I don't know if there's any thought on that, but that's just a good way to be prepared, to make sure that there's always somebody available to take over should a department head need to be out. Any...
I should know the answer to this, but does the charter deal with it at all?
No. Not for...
No, okay.
Not for department heads.
Okay.
So far, most of the police, the fire, have already given me the list the DPW has, so I'm compiling it together so that it'll be set somewhere that everybody knows who will be... Should I be the person that's not there?
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Are there any critical departments that we should get?
What did Nancy say? I missed what Nancy said.
I'm sorry. To this point, the police department, the fire department, the DPW have all given me the list of who would take charge should that department head not be able to be there. So, I'm going to try to get the rest and compile the list and leave it there on the desk.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's more record-keeping then, because they all have set procedures in their offices.
So, anything else on B? What did you want us to do, Trish? Just sort of whether... Just a kind of consensus that that was a good idea, and we'd like Nancy to have that and be prepared to, you know, ask somebody to step in and be in charge?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Need that in the form of a motion?
No, we can sort of do that by consensus. Item C, it is a little bit moot at this point. As I said, we prepared this agenda and meeting before the state declared a state of emergency. We are operating under a set of amended policies for open meetings, and essentially, we can meet to act on what are described as essential items. So, those are items that are essential for the public health, safety, or welfare, essential to maintain government services, or have some sort of statutory deadline. Originally, the thought on this was, given the idea of not having big, you know, public meetings, that we would try and limit our agenda to the most important business. I believe that the Governor's state of declaration of emergency has essentially done that for us. We'll ask that, you know, the... Those who want to come in front of the council be patient until we can have the kind of public meetings that we need to, to get through all of our business. It's a little bit the same with item D. That's part of our declaration, that all non-emergency meetings of boards and commissions are postponed, again, until we have further guidance from the state.
So, basically, as opposed to necessarily having a meeting every other week, that may be in suspension for a while?
I'm not sure about that. I think, you know, for now, there will be business that comes in front of the council that is essential or that does have a statutory deadline, so I think that we will probably at least attempt to keep on our every-other-week meeting schedule, unless we need an emergency meeting in between. But we will have to limit our agenda items to those things that meet that criteria of essential.
Right.
And we still don't quite have a solution yet for what to do about something that requires a public hearing.
Yep.
The state's aware, and the Governor's office and the League of Cities and Towns understands that's a little bit problematic, because...
Yeah, it is.
You know...
Yeah.
So, they're working on it. This was kind of a... What they gave us yesterday was a first step to at least allow us to have a meeting like this and deal with emergency items, but we need more guidance on how to handle any kind of required public hearing.
Okay. Right. But that's going to have a huge effect on getting things passed.
Yeah. This is Mike. The open meeting law obviously doesn't usually allow us to have by phone meetings or whatnot. That's an exception that's been waived by the Governor. However, the Governor has not yet waived basically, again, if like when you pass an ordinance or you grant a liquor license, which requires a public hearing.
Right.
They... We still have to allow the public either to patch into the meeting or, you know, teleconference. So, until we figure that out, I think the council president's idea is to try to limit those items which require a public hearing to a later date, to the 25 or less, or 25 or more thing, get it pushed off. So, but we may have to figure a way around it. We just don't know exactly how to get there.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
I get it.
And the school committee, as well as the budget committee, which are two, are other two elected commissions, it will be up to them as to whether or not they hold meetings. They can hold meetings, again, in accordance with this new amended guidance for open meetings laws.
My question was about the planning board and some of the dates that are going to expire. How's that going to be handled for... I mean, they have dates. They say the clock is set.
So, under the executive order that you just ratified, we have the ability now to extend those dates as a town.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else on boards and commissions or questions on meetings?
No.
Okay. Item E is suggestions to minimize risk for community and staff, including but not limited to hours of operation. So, as you've noticed by declaration, all town offices are now operating on a by appointment basis only, and you need to have an appointment for something that is time-sensitive or has to be done critically here. The staff, I will say this, in the last two days, it's been amazing. They've stepped up to this. They're helping people navigate the website, do online things. They're emailing things to folks, and they're available by phone to answer questions or help people figure out how they download something from the website. So, I think that minimizing the interaction is very helpful. As I said, it's true with the fire department, the police department, the DPW. The library is closed until further notice. The senior center is closed until further notice, although the senior center director is working, and she is working very, very closely with the state on the state's plan to be able to make meals available to those seniors, as well as other at-risk people in the community who may need assistance in getting meals or groceries or any of those other things. So, even the offices that aren't necessarily open to the public, all of the staff are working, which brings...
I also want to mention, just because I'm sure it's happening in a lot of levels, but I think it's a nice thing that happens when these things happen in society, that I know Tiverton Care's organization has reached out to the senior center, to Janet Holmes, and we're organizing a way for seniors to let us know what the kinds of stuff they might need, and volunteers will go and get them.
Yeah.
So, that's going on a lot, and I think that's really nice.
I think... I know that I've heard that a number of individuals have contacted the senior center director. There are also several other charitable organizations or in groups that have sort of sprung up that have offered.
Yeah.
So, I hope that there'll be a good amount of help. And the state is working hard to coordinate the delivery of meals, whether they're grab-and-go meals or grocery-type programs or prepared meals, especially those that can be frozen and stored. So, there is a big effort to make sure that those who, you know, are food insecure, you know, will continue to have access to meals and food for the duration of this.
Yep. Yep. Good.
And the schools as well. RIDE is working with the schools too as well, to make sure that those children that really depend on school for their breakfast and their lunch will continue to do so.
Yep.
The next sort of item for us to discuss on the staff is a new policy that has been enacted, and I'm going to ask the council to ratify it. It's the document that you have that's entitled Temporary Workplace Practices Due to Current Impact of the Coronavirus. This very much mirrors the policy that the state has adopted for their employees. Similar to us, the state does not have TDI either. So, and in some cases, in this particular situation, it actually makes things a little simpler for a community like Tiverton versus some of the communities that do have it. And the objective is to encourage people, to make sure that people who don't feel well do not come to work, regardless of whether or not they have available sick time or not. And it's also to protect any employee who may be exposed and have to quarantine themselves because of a work-related incident, that that isn't something that they have to use, you know, their vacation and sick time if it were work-related. So, I don't know if you've all had a chance to take a look at it. As of right now, we have no issues with the unions with this. They understand this. They realize that this is beneficial for everybody. Again, it very much mirrors the policy that the state has put out. So, because it is a change a little bit for the union employees for what's in the contract, we do need to take a vote on this?
Madam President?
Yes, John. I know, but Solicitor Marcelo and DeCosta are... We've already talked about this, and they're going to walk me through the process of amending the agenda to vote on the employee policy.
Wonderful.
Okay. So, Mike and Travis, remind me, the first thing I have to do is the pursuant to 4246B motion?
Correct.
Okay. Pursuant to 42... The chair will accept a motion pursuant to 4246B to add the following item to the town council agenda for the special meeting of March 17, which would be the ratification of the temporary workplace practices due to current impact of COVID-19 virus.
So moved.
Is there a second? A little second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
In favor.
Okay, so that was unanimous.
So, now you can have a discussion about the policy, or you can now... You can have a discussion if you want, and then at the end of the discussion, you have to actually amend the agenda, make a motion to allow a vote on that policy based on the exigent circumstances of the coronavirus, so you can now vote on it as well.
Good question.
Yes.
My question. After this is all said and done, do we have to bring this back on the agenda to remove it, or does it just automatically go away?
That'll be part of the motion to ratify policy.
Obviously, I think the tentative is going to be in effect as long as the state of emergency exists. So, you can add that, you know, you can just prove it pending, you know, the suspension of the state of emergency.
Because the reason I say that, I'd just be afraid that if this goes on for a while and we forget about it later on, and we come back and somebody says, oh, no, we're going to go by this, and we never voted to...
Good point.
...disband it. So, I just want to make sure that that's included in the motion.
Good idea, Joe. I think if we just, as the solicitor said... I think if we just, as the solicitor said during the period of the state of emergency. Are there any other questions about this policy or?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to pursuant to adding the item to the agenda to allow us to vote.
Okay, so you're making a motion pursuant to 42, 466B to allow us to vote on this agenda item?
Correct.
Because there exists an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
In favor.
Okay, so unanimous.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the temporary workplace practices due to current impact of COVID-19 virus, subject to the policy expiring upon the expiration of the aforementioned executed executive orders.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second?
Is that formal enough for the solicitor?
Mike, Travis?
Hello?
Hello, are we good with that motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
In favor.
Councilor Dicks is in favor. Okay, so there we are. As far as the, the other portion of that, this is a little bit at the town clerk's discretion as to, I think we're, we'll wait and see with limited hours, or, I'm sorry, not limited hours, but limited appointments, I think we'll see how it goes and if the town clerk feels that, you know, we're keeping people here unnecessarily, that she is welcome to come back to us and ask us whether or not, you know, we want to curtail the hours or not. Madam Clerk?
Now, you cannot, you can't handle that through executive order. I would have to wait for a council meeting to do that, right?
I believe that's under the, your powers as administrator, interim town administrator.
Oh, you think it's already under the House? Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I mean, it's not necessary at this point.
No.
I think there's work to do and people are adjusting to these hours, so it's not necessary right now, but it could be in the future. I'm very up with all the goings-on to the other clerks in the town halls. I'm getting emails at least every half hour, so I am staying tuned to how other town halls are handling it as well. But at this point, we're fine.
Any other questions or comments? I, I just want to say that I really am, I commend the staff. They are doing a wonderful job under trying circumstances and they're really doing everything they can help to, everything they can do to help the citizens and help people navigate this. You know, some people are a little impatient and everybody has just been really, really great under, as I said, a difficult set of circumstances. Any other staff questions or comments? Item F, discussion impossible vote on appointment of interim administrator. I, I don't necessarily know that we're going to vote, but I do want to let the council know that Administrator Reitzma, who as we know has been out on medical leave, has indicated his desire to retire. So he won't be returning. The charter says that the town clerk can act as acting administrator for a period of up to 35 days. After that, the charter says that if the administrator's position is vacant, that we can appoint an interim administrator. It's just something I would like the council to think about. I'm not sure in the current set of circumstances who's going to be applying for a job anywhere, first of all. We're, we're in sort of an odd place. Nancy's period as acting will last for a little while, but, you know, by charter, it can't go indefinitely. And I would also say that we don't know how long the state of emergency is going to exist and how long all of this is going on. For right now, everybody is out straight. All the department heads, particularly police, our police chief, our fire chief, but most especially Nancy. I mean, everybody's buried because there's so much extra work and so much extra stuff coming because of this. It may not be fair to ask Nancy to also take the interim spot, and, and it may even be that we're asking too much to ask somebody internally. So I'd just like the council to think about the possibility of an interim, especially if it's going to take us a while to get a permanent just because of what's going on here. I don't know if anybody's got any thoughts or comments, but we need to start the discussion.
The 35-day interim, when does that start?
Well, we started at the 24th.
24th of this.
February.
Before that.
It wouldn't.
I think it would go to probably April.
So it wouldn't go from the day he submitted his retirement?
No, it would.
I think it would go from when you appointed.
It would go from the day we appointed Nancy as acting, when.
Which if that was February 24th and 35 days, that puts us like April 2nd, which is right around the corner.
It is.
I mean, can we, would we be in a position, given everything that's going on and, you know, to think about, you know, who would ultimately be the interim town administrator? Could we, provided Nancy would take it, re-up the 35 days once that expires?
I'd have to ask the solicitor, but I think under the declaration of emergency, we have some leeway, yes?
Yes, some leeway, yes.
Some. So I'm, I'm not sure that, and, you know, honestly, at this point with everything that's going on, even though it says that in the charter, I think I'd be extremely disappointed if somebody was going to fuss about that, given the circumstances right now. However, it may be something that we need to think about, especially because just given what's going on in the world right now, I'm not sure if we went out to advertise immediately what kind of applicants we'd get.
Who's going to come for an interview in person?
You know, I, I mean, I'm not sure that this isn't going to take a little while, in which case we might actually have to think about going to that, in, that option that we have in the charter, which is to have an interim. So not something we have to decide tonight, but I think it, it's worth teeing up and starting to think about and maybe have a further discussion at our next council meeting. And finally, the last item was the discussion impossible vote on a statement to the budget committee regarding the general fund and the casino revenue in view of what is going on. And, and no one knows how long this is going to last. We hope it won't last for a long time, but we really don't know. So we don't know how much it's going to cost the town in terms of, of extra, in terms of services, in terms of additional costs. We may find ourselves with higher than what we expected police and fire department over time. And then, of course, the casino is closed. So whether or not we want to make a statement or go on the record for the budget committee regarding the casino revenue and the general fund particularly, because, you know, the general fund, the restricted general fund and as well as some of the unrestricted, that's our emergency money. That's the rainy day money. That's the money that we use when we have an emergency. This could be the emergency. We just don't really know how long this is going to last. So I didn't know if the council had a thought on that one way or the other.
Well, I, I for one would like to just use all the, all the money that we have in this year's budget and then if there's an emergency for next year, worry about it then. I don't know how would we do that, but I don't want to get into where we're making this big amount of expense going on and maybe it might not happen for the following year. I, I just, I'm, I'm just kind of leery of that, like it's a, I, I just want to be more cautious about doing that.
Madam President.
So you're saying, so Donna, you're saying what to keep it?
Nancy, Nancy, hang on, hang on one second, John. He's got the floor and then I'll come right back to you.
Okay, okay, okay.
I know, it's tough because she can't see.
I know.
So my, my thought on this would be, you know, I, I think, and I'm sure the budget committee's probably thinking this as well, but, you know, I would like to see as they go through the revenue line item, looking at next year, if they can do anything and everything to not put forward resolutions or sources of revenue that would include the, you know, payment from the casino and then also taking money out of the general fund. And I think that that's ultimately the point that the Madam President was driving towards is that, you know, it doesn't, does it make sense for us going through the budget season now, not knowing what's going to happen, you know, in two weeks, a month, two months? You know, hopefully everything gets better, maybe it doesn't. And if it doesn't, you know, would we want to see a budget go out to vote? That includes, you know, stripping general fund revenue down to, you know, the mandated required minimums that we have to hold. I think in, you know, in light of everything that's going on, it would be wise for us to ask the budget committee to very strongly not take revenue from the general fund and account for revenue coming from the casino so that in the event that this continues and it does continue out beyond, you know, hopefully this couple of weeks, the town will have some sources of revenue because, again, we have people who right now are, are not going to be working. We're not sure where sort of federal assistance is coming. We may have issues receiving revenue in the form of quarterly tax payments, which are due right around the corner. And if that's the case, we're going to need every last penny in reserve in order to keep this operation going. And as we've heard over the years, it feels like every single budget season this comes up, you know, God, where we say, God forbid something happens, we're out of money in like three weeks, based on the reserve requirements that we've, what we hold. So, and I could be even overstating that, but I, you know, I would, I would like to see us send something to the budget committee that says, you know, as you're going through this process, please don't account for money coming out of the general fund treated as revenue, and please do not account for money coming from the casino payment. Again, we don't even know what's going to happen with the state level, if the state gets underwater on this and when that money could arrive.
We are shopping.
I apologize for belaboring that point.
That's okay. Nancy?
No, I, I guess, I, I think I'm hearing, right now, the casino revenue is just considered money available as part of the budget, right? It goes into the budgeting process. And I think that's what Donna is suggesting that continues for this budget season. Is that what I got from what Donna said?
Yes, we, just like overtime, you should never count on overtime as you, you shouldn't be spending money that you, at the casino money as if it's something that's always going to be there. So I'm a little concerned with, you know, doing this sort of thing where you're, you're going to spend casino money or take out of the, using the general fund right now or later or, or thinking you're going to use that and you, and then I don't know what is going to come budgetary for taxes either for the levy. That's another concern with what's going on. I, I don't, I really don't know what the answer is. I have to be honest. This is uncharted territory. But what I see going on with the budget right now for next year, it seems a little pricey. So I'm, I'm a little concerned with the whole thing, the, the whole thing, what's going on now, what's going on for the future, and it's, I think it's, it's really tough, tough to, to figure out what to do, in all honesty, for all of us.
Can I ask a really basic question? And, and that is, we, we have given our municipal budget and our recommendations to the budget committee. Are they still looking to us for guidance to doing their budget or is this really the budget committee's call at this point?
Well, ultimately, in terms of a decision, it's totally the budget committee's call. But I do think that we have something of a responsibility to look at, you know, potentially or to advise them, again, as John said, you know, if this goes on for a long time and we start to see shortfalls in property taxes because people just don't have the money to pay them.
Yeah.
Or if, if this starts to cost the town money in terms of, you know, I mean, if we were a terribly hard-hit community and our police and our fire department over time just, you know, went up because we had to work with the staff that was well and could do it, we don't really know what our expenses are going to look like if this becomes a lot more serious than it is for Tiverton right now, and we don't know what our revenue's going to loo, look like. You know, the casino is also closed. It's for now, closed for a short period of time, but if it's closed for a long period of time, what happens to our revenue?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, I think that we do have.
But we're still guaranteed from the state, right?
You know, I don't really know in the event that it's closed, how that works, to be honest.
I don't either. That's why I'm asking.
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't think, I don't think the state's willing, even knows the answer to that at this point.
No. So I, I think that the question was, you know, to, to just, again, it's the budget committee's decision, but to let them know that there are some significant unknowns here and that, oh, oh, Mike's calling. I think we lost him.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, he was calling me too and I, I didn't know what was going on, so you pick up, please.
Did we lose you? Do you want to get conference back in?
I'll pay his phone bill.
Okay. All right, so now I've got Mike on speakerphone. Can, can, okay, can everybody hear everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So I, the, the question is just whether or not, you know, we let the budget committee know that we have a concern as far as dipping too deeply into the general fund as well as to let them know, you know, the casino revenue is, you know, for this year, we don't really know what's going to happen with it being closed, but if this continues into, you know, fiscal next year, we don't really know what happens. Therefore.
We dipped into the, we dipped into the general fund with all the recycling stuff.
Well, we asked that to come out of the, well, the casino revenue goes into the general fund, but we specifically, you know, said that we would, we saw this as a one-time purchase that, you know, could be funded with revenue from the casino revenue.
Yeah.
So that's the question. Do we want to, do we want to craft a statement just advising the budget committee that we do have concerns about reserves if this were to go on for a long period of time?
I, I would think that if this does go on and we get into a situation with the state, I think they're going to take money wherever they can to try to get through this. And if that means take from what's promised to us by the casino, they're going to take it, I would think, because this is turning out to be a major disaster. And I, we don't know if we're going to get any money from the federal government, so the, the state doesn't know yet.
4.9 million so far.
Right. So I would say, depending on how long this goes, they're probably going to take whatever money they need to get through this. So I would say, yeah, we shouldn't count on that.
Okay.
And Madam President?
Yes, John.
One more thing too. Obviously, we're going to get a second bite at the apple once the budget committee's finished, but as we get closer to that too, it may be worthwhile for us to think about additional resolutions to put forward during the FTR and, you know, maybe something surrounding the casino revenue and using that to offset parts of the budget officially would be the way to go.
Okay.
But I, I have some ideas. I'll wait till we get closer to that, though.
So we can do thi, two things because the, because the FTR does have statutory deadlines that would fall under essential business, so we can take up potential resolutions at a council meeting that we would want to send to the budget committee. I think that, you know, sort of question is, do we want to share our, somehow before they do their final voting, share our concerns with them about the general fund and the casino revenue? Steve?
Madam President, yeah, I would say yes, that we should communicate that to them, although I think that they would be aware of this as well, but I think to, you know, reinforce it or reiterate it, this is a good idea.
Okay. Do we have sort of a consensus on that?
I'm, I'm neutral on it, but I don't oppose it, I guess, but I think they're obviously going to be thinking about it. I agree with Steve.
going to be thinking about it, I agree with Steve.
My concern is the eventual percentage of what the budget's going to be. I'm just really concerned about that, and I, and to keep it, unfortunately, to keep it that people can afford the taxes, we do use the general fund of the casino money, I just don't know what we're going to do right now with it being, it looks pretty high to me.
Well, I mean, they're not, they're not finished with their work yet, and ultimately, you know, they, they'll have to finish. It's sort of a matter of, a little bit of raising this as a, as an issue now to them before they do their final voting.
Yeah. I think the prudent thing to do is to at least mention it to them.
Anybody?
I concur.
Consensus, okay. In that case, assuming that the budget committee does have a meeting, which, again, that's up in the air, but if they do, at some point, you know, we will let them know before their final vote, and at that point, maybe we have some guidance from the state on casino revenue, or maybe the tax collector, because, you know, fourth quarter taxes are due pretty soon, you know, looks a little bit at that, maybe we have a better idea of how long this might go on for. Okay. So that, I think, completes our agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
So, there's a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And second?
Oh, I guess I'll, I thought I had motion, but, no, it's all, I'll second that, I'll second that.
I've got two motions, and I need a second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
In favor!
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you to everybody at home, stay safe, practice your social distance thing, your hand washing, and we'll all get through this.